We'll call the meeting to order. Just so everybody's aware, we're starting a little bit late. We had a training session for the board just before this, so we're just a few minutes late for anybody tuning in that's been sitting and anticipating us getting started. Here we go. For those of you here, thanks for coming. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doral.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Walshiger.
Here.
If you'd all rise, remove your caps for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Landwehr.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have anybody here that would like to, that has public comments for any items that are not on the agenda? Anybody that wants to speak for items that are not on the agenda, please step towards the podium at this time, seeing as there are none. The first item of business is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes from the October 22, 2018 meeting.
Awesome.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, we have the consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. That is in the amount of $1,230,658.90.
I move we pay the bills for $1 million. I don't have it on a computer, whatever your mom. Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers in the amount of $1,230,658.90. Any discussion on the vouchers? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Stay.
That motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have a consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. First, we have a consideration for bartenders' operators' licenses that expire June 30, 2020. This is for Lynn McCullfress, Matthew Schultz, and Terrence Casper.
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anybody have anything to add on the licenses? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have licenses relating to the St. Charles Parish Trivia Night. This is at St. Charles Parish on November 17, 2018. Location 313 Circle Drive. This is for a temporary Class B beer/Class B wine retailer's license.
Also move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that temporary Class B beer/Class B wine retailer's license for St. Charles. Any discussion on that?
Darlene, how many have we approved for St. Charles for the year?
I couldn't tell you the total. They're allowed to have three for wine, so I believe they're within that.
Okay.
And beer, there's no limit.
Oh. Okay.
Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
I didn't even know.
The next item on the agenda, we have a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1112, 2018-01, a resolution approving the sewer utility rate effective the first quarter of 2019.
Also move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If our administrator would want to just touch on that increase, just so the public knows.
Sure. This arises out of the annual conversation that the village board has related to the sewer utility. In an effort to avoid major spikes in the rate over time, the board has taken an approach for the last several years of raising it an incremental amount, in this case 5%, annually to avoid, like we had in the water system, the 30% hike that came a couple of years ago. So this is just an annual activity that the board goes through prior to approving the budget.
It was moved and seconded. Anybody else have anything to add? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That resolution is carried, that motion is carried for that resolution. Next item on the agenda are the items. We have consideration of items that are related to our 2019 village budget as shown on Tab 1, Page 8, and Tab 31, Pages 1 and 2 of the 2019 budget book. All information after Tab 1 is for informational purposes only. These figures may be modified by the village board during final consideration at this meeting.
I'm Ryan Bailey, Finance Director. Just give you guys a little background on everything. Nothing has changed since our public hearing and our budget publication. All of the numbers are the same. Overall, it's a 10-cent mill rate increase. So on a $270,000 house, that's going to be about $27, $20, and then we have the $22 for the sewer utility. But everything is the same. There's been no changes. We got a couple revenue numbers in that were very close to projected, so we did not do anything with those. They were a little bit higher than we budgeted, so that's a positive.
Okay. If I, I'm going to toss a question at you just when we were going through our meeting, and this isn't that big a deal, it's not anything that would change, I just want to clarify. I thought that we had gone down just a tick, like a .025, and now we're up just, I mean, it's a very small amount that we're up. Was I just maybe misunderstanding something? Was there ever a time where our numbers were?
Our expenditures are down.
It's about $11,000. It's about a tenth of a percent.
Yeah, that's, okay. Just a tick. Okay.
But Ryan can tell you that that has a lot to do with how we are moving cash around kind of behind the scenes.
Normally, we move a little bit more money of fund balance to the capital projects funds or the corporate reserve fund.
Sure.
We're just not doing that because we're not paying for as much of that out of cash. Everything's from the borrowing.
Yep. And I would, it was my misunderstanding, then I was confusing total with expenditures. Thank you.
And as you get down to it a little bit later, the only item we don't have is the bid expenditure budget. They will be approving that tomorrow. So one of the line items, you see, you'll be approving their revenue, and then later on, you'll be approving the expenditures for the bid. But unfortunately, they don't approve that till tomorrow, so we can't approve that tonight.
All right.
So, thank you.
So, thank you, Ryan. So with that, we will take each one of these, one by one, because I believe that typically, we need a roll call on each one of these? Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So I will start going, and if anybody has any discussion, just please stick your hand out or up so that I know that you have something you want to say about that item, okay? Because I'll be looking at the screen. So the first item is a consideration of a motion to approve the 2019 municipal general fund budget in the amount of $7,799.837, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2019 budget book. May I have a roll call?
You need a motion.
Sorry.
I move we approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have a consideration of a motion to approve the 2019 water utility budget in the amount of $1,804,010, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2019 budget book.
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. That motion carries. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to approve the 2019 sewer utility budget in the amount of $1,671,300, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2019 budget book.
So move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. That motion carries. The next item is consideration of a motion to approve the 2019 TIF Number 4 budget in the amount of $320, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2019 budget book.
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, vote please.
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. That motion carries. Next item, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2019 TIF Number 5 budget in the amount of $320, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2019 budget book.
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2019 debt service budget in the amount of $1,481,700, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2019 budget book.
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. That motion carries. Next item is consideration of a motion to approve the 2019 capital improvements impact fee and special revenue and other funds in the amount of $3,565,904, for the total village expenditure budget in the amount of $16,517,863.
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. That motion carries. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to authorize a downtown business improvement district assessment of $74,800, as requested by the bid board, with approval of the bid's final expenditure budget held until consideration of the 2019 operation plan.
I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, vote please.
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doral.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Landwehr.
Aye.
Trustee Swenson.
Aye.
Trustee Walshiger.
Aye.
President Vanderstel.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve a general wage adjustment and the resulting 2019 payroll matrix.
I still move.
You, uh...
We got to, hold on. Go ahead.
So, this is an item of the village board we'll have to discuss a little bit. As I included in my memorandum to the board and some information in response to a question from Trustee Myers to this afternoon, we did a little review of what the area municipalities were doing. Most of them were doing 2%. There were a couple that were above that in terms of general wage adjustments. Of course, there are some, as I mentioned in my memo, that do wider ranges, anywhere from 0 to 5%, depending on a different category or a different method of increasing staff wages. Also, this afternoon I pulled up the, or this morning, pulled up what the Department of Revenue calculates every year, or calculates actually multiple times through the year. You'll remember that Act 10 changed the way union contracts are dealt with, and for general bargaining units, there's only one item they can really bargain over, and that's their base wage adjustment. That was noted by the Department of Revenue. What did they tell you? 225 or 25? I can't remember. Over 2%. I apologize. I don't remember that off the top of my head. It's in my email.
2.1.
Was it 2.1?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, so that was over 2% as well. At this point, staff would recommend, up to the village board, of course, but staff would recommend a 2.1% adjustment to keep the village pay range competitive with our neighbors.
My problem is that it's another one of these darn things that come up at the last minute. Let's, we got to hurry up and let's get this thing done. Now, we've got a payroll matrix that was designed probably when Dick was first elected here. And I'm sure that job responsibility and job positions and job categories have changed. And I don't want to come in and just say, okay, let's just keep it that same old way, and let's just do it. We've had changes in the DPW. We've have, you know, I understand we're going to have some changes in the recreational department. We're having all these things, but the matrix is something that is a range of how, what that job is really worth. And for us to come in and say, okay, let's just do it like this without really looking at it, I mean, it doesn't seem to be the right thing to do, especially like, let's do it right now and get it over with. You know? That's my problem with it. I didn't get any memo from Dave on that, so I'm not sure what he's talking about. But the matrix is critical, because that's, this is where the beginning is, and this is where the end. However you fall in that category, that is where your pay is going to be. And I think we have to take a look at that.
What do you suggest, or whatever?
No, I just wanted to add something, because I want to make sure, and I don't, hopefully I'm not out of bounds, because there hasn't been a motion made here yet.
Right.
I want everybody to keep in mind, and we went through this last year, all right? There is a, I'm going to just make these numbers up. This is hypothetical, all right? So let's say you fall into the category of, we don't even have this in the book, so I'm throwing this out there. Your pay range is 20,000 to 30,000, and you fall somewhere in there. Let's say that is the person that cleans the table, that's what they make, okay? 20,000 to 30,000, someone in there. As they get better at cleaning the table, that's supposed to go up. In Heartland, historically, what has happened, to the best of my knowledge, is the village board, that pay range is there just to keep you in that scale. Maybe I'm losing people. There is a pay range a person's supposed to fall into based on how much they bring to the table on the job. Obviously, they start at a lower end of that, and then they move up. There's certain places that have it more defined out. If you're a police officer, typically, if I'm not mistaken, you'll come in, you may be at a lower range. Within four years, you're going to be up near the top. Now, that's in police, that's a little different, because they go through, I mean, they're going through extensive training constantly. My point is, it is a range for the village to keep that position and the positions that fall in that pay range, that that range stays at that scale, or within, you know, keeps it competitive with what the job is worth. In Heartland, there is a few steps that have been added to that. Number one, not only does the scale in the budget book move up, so if you were at 20,000 to 30,000 is the range, if we've elected for it to go up 1%, the top end would go up 1% and the bottom would go up, so you'd be making a little bit more than 20 to the top end of a little bit more than 30,000. Typically, what Heartland does is adds on to that and says, and everybody working for the village will get a raise in that amount. Okay? So when I say that we're adjusting the, when we're adjusting the scale, sometimes people get confused between adjusting the scale in our budget book and what that pay range will be for that job description and giving the raises to the people. Maybe that sounds confusing, because it is a little bit, but that is, historically, that's what we've done.
Yeah, and I'll just give you a little background, too. There's a lot of employees who, let's say they've been here 10 or 15 years. I don't want to say we don't follow a step system, but there's somewhere. So effectively, if you all said, yes, you would get a 2.1, that would be their raise for the year. That's generally what we've done, is that is the cost of living adjustment. For, I would say, 85% of our employees, if you would say we agree to a 2.1% increase, 85% of employees would get a 2.1% increase. There are still other employees that would get that 2.1, plus continue to go through any steps or any six-month, one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year anniversary raises. But for the vast majority of us, and it's not putting it on you, generally, all it is is a cost of living adjustment. I think that's, that's the best way to explain it, is we kind of look around and say, the DOR has said 2.1%. We've talked to surrounding communities, all the administrators, clerks, everybody asks, what are you, what are you doing, what's your board doing? It's generally in the 2% to 3% range that boards are offering for the cost of living adjustment.
Right.
So like I said, for 85% of, 85% of employees, what you guys do here, that's generally what their raises.
I think the cost of living would be a lot higher.
It's not.
Well, Social Security went 2.1 or something.
2.25.
Or 2.2 or whatever.
2.8.
Or something. I was going to suggest, if we want to do it, and I'll put it out there, and then I'll, I was going to say 2%. 2.5. I hate that 2.1. When you're talking about 1%, last year, we turned it around, we took 1%, we ended up with 1.9, which is, I don't know, maybe a dollar and a half a week to the average employee, you know, so, whatever it was. But anyhow, I'll make a motion that we go 2.5% to get the ball rolling.
Isn't there a rule on what we can and can't, how high we can go?
Well, like Dave was saying, technically, the only one was unions, but our only one is the police union, and that's the only tool they can bargain. But yeah, for the rest of employees.
Okay.
And what we do, Jeff was alluding to it correctly, we take that pay matrix for every step, whatever you guys would approve, that's what we bump up the pay matrix by so that we stay within that range. Because we do have employees at the bottom, we do have employees at the top, so.
And so with that system, somebody that's doing an outstanding job, doing something over and above, anybody else in that category, gets the same price as?
No.
But does a supervisor or the manager of that department have any control in that pay raise?
The short answer is yes. The long answer is yes, but we don't have a very good policy on that. And as I've mentioned to the board in the past, and have talked about with the management staff, this is something we need to create and bring back to the village board to describe better how we want to handle people moving through the range. We need to decide a variety of things about how long should it take somebody to go from the bottom to the top? How long should it take somebody to go from the bottom to the midpoint? When most of our employees were defined by union agreements, that was easy, because the union agreement wrote it all out for us. But now, most of our employees are really not covered by union agreements, and we need to, we need to really respond to that and get a better system together.
And now, if we go out to hire somebody, we'll look at that pay range.
Yeah, and we have a lot going on, because we got a motion that's been made. No, I'm just saying, we just got to be cognizant of that, huh?
And no second.
And no second.
But with that range, we got a range of, let's say, 50,000 to 60,000, 70,000, 50,000 to 60,000. If I want to go out and hire somebody, and we want to hire somebody that's really good, do I hire him at the beginning or do I hire him at the end? Now, what if the supervisor is in that same category, and maybe there's another supervisor that's doing a great job, that's been here a long time? Do we put the new person at that level, or? I mean, it's like, we, all of a sudden, we got, it's like, oh, if you've been here a year, you're getting more, okay, yeah, 1% or 2%. It's not, it has nothing to do with what additional value an employee is bringing to the village.
So...
And that, that value is something that I think we, we've been losing it a little bit, because there's people that are doing an outstanding job, and other people that I hear about. You know, so...
You've got to hire a person and keep a person that what the wage is. And if you don't want to give them anything, then you can turn around and go to...
No, Dick, I'm not talking, I'm talking about an average, you know, like you do a really good job, I could put you up, you know, maybe a little bit higher in that range than Randy, who is just sitting and comes late to the meeting. You know?
No, I understand that.
And if I may, that was what I meant by that. The short answer is yes. The short answer is yes. We do do that. We do differentiate raises given to employees other than the general wage adjustment. We do differentiate wages given to employees based on performance. And my point of my longer answer was, staff and I believe, that is, management staff and I believe, that we need to come up with a better way to describe that, that is, that allows it to be applied more universally across the municipality.
See, that's only an adjustment. What? Isn't this what we're voting on, then, is to approve that and not change it?
No.
Is it going to, we're going to say, let's just keep it the way it is until we get time to get to it?
What we're, what we're asking you to approve is, is one part of two potential parts to a raise. One is the, as Ryan Bailey referenced, is sort of the cost of living adjustment. That's the, that's the part that we're asking you to consider right now. What would we give our employees for a cost of living adjustment so that because of inflation, next year, you don't make less than you do today? And then there's another component to that, that is the performance-based aspect of, you can get an additional amount of a raise in some amount based on how well you're doing.
We do. We evaluate on anniversaries. We, we're doing annual reviews.
So you evaluate them on their jobs, on their evaluation?
We evaluate them on their performance, yes.
On their performance, so everybody's got a evaluation?
Yes.
In the village?
Yes.
That's correct.
We only, we only adjusted that range when we put that range in, because we ran into that. And we only adjusted once, and all of a sudden, it got to the, where everybody hit the top. This is a lot of bad.
Okay.
We only adjusted that range when we put that range in, because we ran into that. And we only adjusted once, and all of a sudden it got to the, where everybody hit the top. This is a lot of bad, and that screwed it up.
You're right, and where I want to jump in here, and I know that there is, I think it, and the motion can be remade, Dick, I think it died for lack of a second, because no, you can remake it, though, if you want to.
I just wanted to start it going.
But, so, I mean, we're kind of getting off in the weeds, because this is just on the general wage again. I'm going to just give my opinion on the way that I see it. We don't have a good system that's set up for what would be considered merit-based increases. So if someone is doing really, really good, and they've been here four years and had the exact same amount of training as someone else that's been here four years, but is really, really struggling currently, at least with many, not all, many of the employees, mainly it was, I'm going to throw it out there, that it's been with the DPW department, there isn't a very good merit-based increase there. Most of them have only gotten, to the best of my understanding, whatever we do as the general wage adjustment, there has been no merit-based anything.
In the past.
In the past. And I do think that we touched on it some last year, but we, obviously, we have work that we need to do in that arena. However, at the same time, it's my understanding that there is other employees, there are employees, certain ones, I don't know exactly which ones each year, some, not necessarily in DPW, but I'm talking as a whole organization, that do get the merit base, like, hey, here you go. We do have to figure that out. I don't think that that's something that falls on the board's plate. I think the board would say, okay, DPW, you have whatever, you know, this department that goes to that manager is going to know best on who to take care of.
But then that merit went up, that you didn't run in, that's what we ran in before. I know you don't like to hear what happened before.
No, you're right. You're right. They hit the top, and then they're stuck.
And then it wasn't, so when you give 2% or 2.5, which I asked for, the merit thing goes up, which gets it a little better, it needs work, but it keeps the merit up that 2% also, actually.
Dan?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought this was brought up one or two meetings ago, that annual reviews have not been done for everybody, and for even a lot of the DPWs, that reviews haven't been done.
Reviews should have been done on everybody last year.
They're not completed, it's on their anniversary dates.
But even, but even so, even the department heads haven't had a review, an annual review, which I thought was supposed to have been done the first quarter of this year.
To the best of my knowledge, everybody has gotten a review.
I was told no at one of the meetings. Dave?
That is something that we'll be able to, if it hasn't happened, we have to absolutely look into it.
Dave said no.
Then that's something that we will have to look into. However, right now, what we're dealing with is a general wage adjustment, and I know there's some confusion on that. Does any, can you give me a real, I know this is a guesstimate, a realistic guesstimate, how many people truly, if you take the entire organization on a percentage, are at the top? And the only reason I'm asking this is because last year, when we were in the talks, and this doesn't have any difference of whether we should raise it, some we should, but at first, it seemed, it made it sound like there was a lot of people that were at the top, but if you take the number as an organization that were at the top, we're, this is...
I wouldn't say there's a ton that are at the top, but there's a ton, like I said, when I say 85% of us, we just, historically, what we've done here prior to some of you...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it's been, you'll get a raise at six months, a year, two years, three years, four years, five years. Whether you're at the top, middle, bottom, that just kind of stalled, that's where it stayed.
Okay.
And it's competitive, we don't look and say, you know, everybody, and it's not my decision, it's not Dave's, it's kind of what the departments went through.
Right.
So there are people that are at the top, so if we do a 2.5, or 2% merit-based increase, that scale is going to have to go up 2%, otherwise technically, per our audit, we'd be not in compliance with our payroll matrix.
Okay.
So that's why when we say, if you approve a 2%, we're asking that the payroll matrix go up, because there are people at the top.
That's what I said, that's why we ran into trouble.
Right.
People at the top.
And what I'm going to suggest is that, and this goes, and obviously, you know this much better than I do, and Dave, this goes for you also, where we have to get to a point is that the top actually is where people stick to it, but we get a little bit closer to 80% when someone has 20 years to go, because we have the foresight to say, hey, we want to keep giving them a point and a half, or two points, or three points even, based on how they're doing, but, you know, we don't want it just to be based on general wage, because what happens if there is deflation? Now we're standing in front here, and I'm going to feel pretty horrible, because everybody's going to work just as hard, and all of a sudden, let's say the economy, let's say something does happen, if inflation actually changes, and it's minus two, I'm not taking money back, and, but just as a village, I would feel really bad saying, no, you're going to get nothing, because we want to stay competitive, but at least that way, there's still money. So then the supervisors, yourself, going to the people that report to you, you can say, yeah, you're still getting 2.5 or 3%, because you've done such a good job this year, it's not just based on the economy. Does that make sense?
My question, hey, we're getting way off, way off of my, but there's two parts of this. It says a consideration for a motion to approve the general wage adjustment and resulting 2019 payroll matrix. I don't like the last half.
What I'm telling you...
I don't like that 2008, I don't want to mess with that, like next year's matrix, because that's going to put it off.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you approved a 2% general wage increase and didn't approve a new matrix, we'd be out of accordance with our audit.
Can you say that again?
If you approved, let's say, a 1% pay increase and did not adjust that payroll matrix, the people at the top would be higher than what that matrix says, so we would be in non-compliance with our payroll matrix.
That's why you need...
All we're asking, if you do a 2% raise...
You just want them to connect.
I have to adjust the payroll matrix by 2%.
Understood.
And I can leave the bottom at the bottom.
No, that I got. I see. They should keep things in balance.
We can dislike that payroll matrix, I'm absolutely fine with that, we can fix it.
I got you.
It was inherited, but it's something, right now, if we do a wage increase, that payroll matrix has to go up, otherwise we're in non-compliance for the people that are at the top.
The matrix is that the...
I'm not a fan of that either, that payroll matrix is a 20-step.
I agree with that.
And that needs an adjustment, but I don't know whether one, if you want to wait until you get it adjusted, but...
What's in the contingency?
That was a question to you, Ryan, what's in the contingency?
I know he's getting it from both. What's in the contingency?
112,000.
112.
113,000.
And each point is 40? No, that's, you're close, I know you're close. Contingency is a bunch that we have for...
Contingency is 108,000.
I can tell you what I was going to say, my numbers may be off. I was, oh, I could make a motion. Dick made a motion of 2.5, I'm going to make them, well, you might not like this.
Whatever died.
I was going to make, I was going to make the motion that we go with 2 points, and I'll tell you why. Last year, we gave 1.9, inflation-based on the numbers that I looked at was 1.3. This year, the numbers were actually higher, the numbers were 2.1, so we are coming under that just a touch. If you run the math on it, it comes out to about 1.885 is where we should be, so rounding it up to 2. But what that does is it takes into account for last year, and not going up to 2.5, it takes into account for last year. It keeps us in that general thing, but with that, I'm saying I really, well, I'd like to have it on the agenda for the first meeting in January to begin talks about this, if you could make sure that happens.
What's the wage to go in January meeting?
Huh? No, 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 that's not what I said.
In the other thing, yeah.
I'm saying, in a minute. I am proposing and making the motion that we have a general wage increase and adjust the matrix for a 2% increase.
Which would be, I'm interpreting...
$80,000.
80 out of the 108?
112.
108.
108.
112.
So you have 28, no, contingency.
No, 188, too.
What do we use the contingency for?
That.
For the things that we, that come up?
Things that you...
You never use contingency, contingency has just always been something that generally has gone towards wage increases, but there's also, we have things that are expected or unexpected that happen through the year. So if you did a 2%, you'd be at 80, 85,000.
Where does money come from that goes into that account?
It's just part of the budget, yeah, it's part of the overall of it.
We used to always try to keep 100 or 150 in it.
We did, that number slowly decreased through the years.
All right, well, that one died for lack of a second. But, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm done, you guys?
Okay, thank you. So with that, we have a consideration of a motion to approve a general wage adjustment and the resulting 2019 payroll metrics, if anybody wants to take any action.
I'd second your 2%. That seems like...
Make the motion, then, make the motion, because it died.
Well, how long did it take to die?
One minute.
Oh, one minute?
Yep. So you're making the motion?
I was on a clock.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah, I'm moving...
I'll second that. 2%. So it's been moved and seconded for a general wage, a general wage increase of, adjustment of the 2% and the matrix. Now we are open for discussion, we have brought the meeting back in line with the rules. So now we can talk a little bit. You made the motion, do you have anything to say?
No, it just seems like a rational, you know...
Way to approach it.
Okay, I would really like to have that, I'm requesting that it be on the agenda. In January, we have to start talking about a merit-based system, number one, so it doesn't totally fall on the board. Number two, no one knows the employees better than their supervisors, and in my opinion, and even, I believe that we need to give those chunks of money out where it comes into the budget that we have, whatever. This is outside of our general wage adjustment, there should be funds there so that, so that employees that are working extremely hard, making a livelihood, keeping the village going, just doing a good job and being good people, should get compensated for it, and move up that, that, that scale in a quicker pace than someone that is not doing that. And it's very important to me that we, as a village, get on board with that quickly, because it is, I believe we are way behind on that. And that isn't on any one person, I just think we all collectively need to do that, the supervisors and people like that, which means it'll involve you a little bit more in the budget process.
But basically beforehand, the union used to take care of that, that's why...
Well, we don't have that anymore, that's why we really got to get up to speed.
The only thing is, we had that other thing that we haven't, needs adjustment on, which you said, see...
Right. Now, Mike, did you have anything?
No, I caused enough problems.
No, it wasn't a problem, I was getting...
I just want to bring that up, that it's, you know, I just don't like to have these things thrown up right away that we should have discussed before, but I didn't realize that was going to throw us out of balance, but I just do think that we should compensate our employees for the ones that are doing a good job. I think we should have that, give the management at least the ability to, hey, thank them and do something rather than saying, hey, you get a cost of living, see you.
And for the record, we have been doing that, and like I said, we just need to come up with a better, more universal policy on it.
So like I said, I did, we don't have it, so maybe we should vote on it and discuss it, what we need. Thank you, sir.
Thanks. So, any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to increase the general wage adjustment, or do a 2% increase of the general wage and the matrix. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Don't we need a roll call?
You should do that on a roll.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should, I'm sorry, thank you, Mike. Roll call, please, I'm very sorry to the board.
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Trustee Doral?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Landre?
Aye.
Trustee Swenson?
Aye.
Trustee Walshinger?
Aye.
President Anderson?
Aye. The motion carries. 2%.
Real quick, too, I will be putting together the full budget now that everything's been approved, there are pages in your budget that you don't have, tab, oh, pretty much all of tab one, I would just be printing those out, and I'll give you guys new budgets sometime in early December. You'll probably see the budget go on the website before then, if you're okay with that, are you okay with it going out to the public before I get you the paper copies?
Mm-hmm. Fine.
And just so the public knows that, they can always go online.
Yep.
And you can look for the budget on there, if you have any problems, you can call into the village, and anybody will direct you over the phone or however, so that you can look through that if you want to.
Absolutely, we have paper copies in the library.
It is electronically on our website.
We have paper copies in the library and a paper copy up in the finance department.
Okay.
And I leave my book with you, Ryan, and then when you get it in, I'll pick it up when it's due.
Okay.
All right, so that motion's been carried. So now we have some items that were requested, I had requested that they be put on the agenda, and this is a, this, the Glen at Overlook Trails, and nothing can happen without this first item, so some of this is all dependent on what happens in each step of the way, but I would like, there's a consideration on our agenda, a consideration of a motion to reconsider the previous motion to postpone further action on Overlook Trails until January 29th. For myself, I did request that it be put on there, there was some other information that came after the meeting, which had me reconsidering, so I would like to reconsider postponing until January 29th. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider making this be postponed until January 2019.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, however, I want to explain to everybody what that is, though. If it's been moved and seconded, this simply means that we re-vote, okay? Not only can we have discussion also, but we re-vote just on that, whether or not we can reconsider it for the vote. Does everybody understand that? We're not voting on the, we're just voting if we even can reconsider it. Then we would have to vote on the original motion at that time.
I think Dave broke that right down on this page, if you...
I was just making sure, because it's going to get very confusing for the camera.
May I explain why, what was behind that now, that we've done the first and the second?
Oh, sure, it's been moved and seconded, yes, absolutely, Ken.
The reason behind that, and I'm not going, I won't go through all this right now, was it had nothing to do with, I think it's a fabulous project, but I want, and I think that we, as a board, deserve to have professional and complete and a corrected plan for this development, not something that's handed to us five minutes before the meeting with handwritten stuff on it. If it's going to be public roads, unless it's public, take private off, if it's going to be private, then leave it on. I have other things, but I'm just saying, that's what was behind the January, was to give the developer time with the holidays and everything to get us the proper and complete plan, which I have seen nothing yet, other than that handwritten scribbled one that we got last time. That's why I had proposed to move it to January. Now, if we can get the professional, complete and correct plan to us prior to that, I have no problems with revisiting that.
Right.
That was why I had said January.
Yep. And I voted in the affirmative, and that's why, I mean, I made the motion to go off of that, I did, after the last meeting, there was a, you know, more information was received that this may be taken out of Heartland completely. And with that, obviously, I mean, there was some, I did call to say, hey, is there any way we can save this? So that I received from the developer stating, you know, I, it wasn't mean, it was gracious, it just said, pull back the paperwork with the amount of time and investment they've been working on it, it was before I was even elected, so this is something that I actually, we, you know, inherited, but this was going on before I was even elected, but I think that, I can't speak for him, but I can say that he just had said the resources that they had put in here, it was, it was just so much, that it just can't keep on switching, and so he pulled it back, however alternately with that, with that, and it was a hand sketch that we had gotten, I did make some, I looked into whether or not that emergency access really would be on to.
That wasn't even part of it.
Oh, no, for me it was, for me it was, because there was some people that were really against, did not want it to be eroded or anything under...
But you're not passing that tonight, this is going to take two months, and if you wait for this poor guy until January, he won't get in there in the spring. Really, and you're not passing it, you're passing parts of it.
No, no, I understand, and I wasn't, but in talking to the developer, when I talked to him on the phone, because the resources, they are already, they have already started to at least talk, or have at least gotten into some talks with Merton, and there is a likelihood that they will pull the project into Merton, and it won't be developed in Heartland.
I'm just going to go through with this right now, then.
Sure.
I spent the weekend doing quite a bit of research on this, as to who owns what lots in surrounding subdivisions. And as I said, I think the overall concept of the condo project is fabulous, I just think, again, we need to get the complete plans, and I deduce that Mr. Newman may have been given information that may not have been entirely factual at that time, nor approved or even discussed with the village board. And there seems to be a few communication assumptions that have caused some lividity with this project. I do, however, take offense with what I perceive as a developer, and I couldn't find the right words for this, but finding an angle or soft spot to try and get the village to basically roll over and just pass this by saying, well, we're going to go, we're just going to keep it in the town now, if you are not going to agree to this, we're taking our toys and we're going to stay where we are. And as I did my research, I looked at projects and subdivisions, single-family homes, which, if you're in the town of Merton, is what it would be built, and with the existing developments in the area, Town of Merton, the village, Village of Heartland, and I can show you the maps of who owns what, lots that are owned, there's 24 lots that are owned by builders, 50 that are not sold, 43 that are sold, and that doesn't even include Seatman's property or the 80 to 100 that are going to go in on Ainsworth and Winkelman.
128.
Okay. And that being said, we can see there's a plethora of inventory out there in the village and in the town, and a lot more coming on the market in less than a mile of this property. But this condo development would be the only one of its kind. It is unique, it's got the best, I think, you know, the trees and the wooded area there, and all we're asking for is the final, what's going to go on? Is it going to be private? Is it going to be public? Before we annex it and take it into our, into the village, and then we come back to you and say, sorry, you've got to have it this way, you've got to have it that way, you're bringing this, give us what you have before, you know, so we have, I like things in writing. And I want the final for what you have now, granted, there's things that can be tweaked later, you know, maybe this house is going to move over here a little bit, but to put in single-family homes in the Town of Merton or the Village of Merton, I mean, our, this developer is smart, he's not stupid, you know, all the best lots get sold, I've got a development on Doran Road, the best lots get sold first and the rest sit there, and that's what's happened in all these other developments. As I've gone through and looked at all the lots, there's still a lot available in Mary Hill Park. Is that the right word for it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So there's, there's too, too much on the market for that. I can't imagine Mr. Newman even considering wanting to do that.
Then why would Town of Merton have 70 lots on Amish Road? There's 70.
I, that's what I'm saying. I think, that I don't, that's got nothing to do with, I'm just saying.
No, I mean.
This is with existing inventory. This is with existing inventory. And that's why I'm saying his condo development, I think, is what should be there, should go there, and I think overall, we're behind him. I think the residents of Mary Hill are behind him. I just want to see in writing the map.
Understood. And I, I asked for it to be put on here, the reconsideration, was simply because in talking to, in talking to that company, in talking to the developer, based on the amount that they've invested in it already, it keeps switching, which, you know, you've been at plan commission meetings, obviously, being a member of that committee, you've seen, sometimes it's even changed from the members wanting it to be changed. They've been going through a lot, they've been through two village presidents, quite a few trustees. For myself, there was some other things that came up, and it had to do with, I do agree that it would be a wonderful, a wonderful thing for Heartland to have those being there. It does appear that it actually was more of a density issue, where these homes will have, they'll have the upkeep where they could be snowbirds and stuff like that, but to get the density that's necessary for it to be worth, because they have a large lot of trees, there had to be enough income there for them to make enough money. Obviously, the margin's got to be right, but also, it affects the values of the homes in Mary Hill. We were able to get rid of some of the problems that were there with the roads that we're going across. Along with that, there is a bigger thing, or a bigger situation that has to do with this. If this does go to Merton, and this is not a scare tactic, but it is reality, there is the question of, do we want to develop that sector? Because it will be very difficult to develop the other land that we have there, it'll become very cost prohibitive. So it's just, these are things that we need to think of, and when that came up, we don't have to think of them. This was my reason for reconsideration, was that, yes, did we maybe make some missteps along the way? Yes, but for the longevity of the village, and whether or not we want to do something in that sector, and someone that's already bought land up there, and the residents in Mary Hill, do we want the exact same thing right next to them? And some of the emails that I've received from the residents there, it was just, I just, that was the reason for the reconsideration. We're not always going to agree, I mean, I, I'm not going to say 100% I'm right, I think it's good to keep it in Heartland, but if we don't do something, then we will lose it, unless I'm being told a non-truth, which I don't think that it is in that, I don't think that it's that way, but we have to decide it in November, by the, we have to decide it quickly.
Decide what?
We have to decide quickly whether we want this project to go forward, because otherwise the developer may on, is on their own going to say, we're going to continue to move forward with Merton.
Well, I, as I said, I, my opinion is, yes, I would want it in the village, but I want to see something, and I would like to see the final plan. I think that's pretty customary.
It is, but it's not. It's customary that you'd get a final plan at the final plan. We just have to vote, just so the plan commission can decide on the final plan of the frontages, otherwise they could make $10,000 worth of drawing and engineering, and all of a sudden we say it's got to change, they got to spend that $10,000 on having the engineers redo that again. So, no, you're right, I understand what you're saying, I do. I would love to see it too, but it hasn't been engineered yet.
And then it's got to wait till January.
So then what is it that we've been looking at? If it hasn't been, what have we been looking at?
We've been haggling with what we even want, so that engineers can design it.
But for that last map that we got.
Yep. That's a conceptual plan.
Okay, then I'm using the wrong terminology.
It'll be very close to that, but it's the concept. The only thing missing from that was that extra road that is now going to go to K, because the residents of Mary Hill absolutely don't want southern oak. It did say private roads on there, you're right. That one is pretty much off the table, based on my conversation with the developer, it's a no-go. I mean, for it to move forward in Heartland, it's a no-go to have privately maintained roads. I'm just telling you everything that was in the conversation, and why I reconsidered it, I'm bringing forth why I reconsidered it. That doesn't mean, no one has to agree with me, I'm simply bringing forward why I reconsidered it, because it changes the outlook for that area, on whether or not we want it in Heartland or not. Based on the information I've just put forward, that's why I reconsidered it. I guess there's not a whole ton I could add.
And then we got the other part of that Youngblood Farm that's already next in Heartland, so that if he goes into Town of Merton with it.
Right.
It just screws up that, that whole thing's been set up for sewer and water, and that's going to hold it up, because that's going to, you're going to have to refer the property it is from sewer and water around the other way around.
But again, I was, I was under the impression we would not use eminent domain, and now I'm seeing on here that we're going to use eminent domain.
Well, I don't think that was ever said.
That's not.
For utilities.
Mr. Gebhardt's attorney was here at the meeting, and said, if we aren't going across with the road, they are willing to negotiate.
Oh, okay.
So in here, it does say, and it specifically says, and, and we haven't gotten to that part yet, but I can tell you ahead of time, it will be strongly encouraged that it absolutely better really work hard at a negotiation, because we don't want to do eminent domain. But this is what I'm saying, we're getting over a lot of speed bumps we were already at, and, and Mr. Gebhardt is willing to negotiate. His attorney came with his statement and said he's willing to negotiate, as long as we're not putting a road or an emergency access over his road. So this is where it is, where people kind of work things, and it is his private property, but for pipes underneath his driveway, he is willing to negotiate.
Is it discussed, though, that underground utility access easements could go to actually the villi, the easements that we have along K?
What do you mean?
No, it's got to come from the top.
Oh, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Out of Mary Hills.
It could go along the road.
No, you'd have to run the, then everyone would walk away.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Everyone, including Seatman, will walk away from that entire sector, because you're talking about running a mile or a half a mile of pipe. You can't afford it. The pipe is up on, there's pipe on Southern Oak, and then the next road up.
Yeah, it's by Mary Hill, and it's.
And keep in mind, when we dealt with the habitat, this is off topic, but the habitat thing in capital, we were only going a quarter mile, and that thing was 400 grand. I mean, it gets expensive. It gets very, very expensive.
I just didn't, I guess I didn't understand why that whole.
If anybody from the public would like to speak, will we take their comments as well? Okay.
I'm the applicant, so.
I know, well, no, I know that, I know.
Nice to see you all again.
I was kind of, but if you could say your name, you, I know.
Yeah, Matt Newman, Newman Companies.
I think even the people watching know who you are.
Yeah, probably by now, it's been like 20 months. So I want to clear up a couple of things, because there's been a lot of discussions about what the developer said, what the developer hasn't said, and I think part of the reason that this project is where it sits today, is because things tend to get very muddy for one reason or another in these meetings. I'm not exactly sure why, but they do. And I want to make one thing abundantly clear, related to Part 6, Letter A, and that is, if this project doesn't get considered by the village board with clear direction on what we need to do as a developer in 2018, we do intend to keep the project in Merton, we do intend, it's already zoned R1, we can do one acre lots, actually, I think 30,000 square foot lots in the Town of Merton, because we already invested in the land, we bought the land in the spring. The family already had held the land for years, but under contract with us for about a year. After our last proposal got shot down, we then made a commitment and bought the land from them and said, it's okay if it doesn't go in Heartland, we'll develop it in Merton. We then came back through this process again. At the end of the day, I feel we've gone through a lot of discussions on this, we've had in-depth conversations about it, I'm more than willing to answer questions about it. There's a few very specific things we need clarity on from the board. If the board doesn't want to take it up or doesn't want to make a decision, I understand it, I respect it, we hope, and I believe that we will do business in Heartland again, so this probably isn't the last time you'll see me one way or the other. But if it's not considered now, the problem we have is, we can't get it started fast enough in the spring. We own the land, we're invested in it, there's carry costs in it, we've done a lot of engineering on this project already. We're ready to either move forward in the Village of Heartland, which is what I believe is best for the Village of Heartland, but if not, that's okay, we'll pivot, go forward in Merton and break ground in this project. So we plan to break ground on it one way or the other in April, basically as soon as the frost goes away, which hopefully it does someday. Whenever that frost gets out, we want to start moving ground, and we would like to develop this project. So I guess just specific to Letter A, there's plenty of other conversations to have here after this, but specific to Letter A, if we don't, if the board does, chooses not to reconsider it, I understand it, I respect it, but then we're going to stay in Merton. So I want to make that clear to the board, that's not a bluff, it's not anything else, I don't mean to make it come across that way, this is just economics. We have to run a business, we have to move forward, we own the land, there's carry costs. It's time to either move forward in Heartland, or we'll keep it in Merton, that's okay with us too. It's a beautiful site, it's going to be developed. I think we've overcome a lot of hurdles at this point, I'd like to move forward, but with that, we're going to need, we're going to need the board to act this year, otherwise we're going to have to stay in, in the Town of Merton. So I guess with Letter A, I'm just asking, what's the decision? If you don't reconsider it, I understand, we'll move on, you don't have to take up the rest of the agenda. If you do, let's talk about the rest of the agenda and figure it out.
If I did misrepresent anything that we spoke about.
You didn't.
I think I didn't, I don't think I did, but if I did, I just want to apologize.
We just got to make decisions.
To say that I said.
That's why I kept my jacket on tonight, so I'll be here till 9:30 or 10:00.
I tried, I think we talked about everything that I said. At this time, does anybody else on the board have anything else on the reconsideration? To, on whether we even take up the reconsideration, because at some point, we'll have to call the question. And this is simply to see if we will vote, you know, reconsider, guide me here, please.
You're right.
Keep track. So anybody else have anything else, we'll call the question. Okay, we'll call the question. I'm guessing we want a roll call. Go ahead with the roll call, please.
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Trustee Doral?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Landry?
Aye.
Trustee Swenson?
Aye.
Trustee Walshlager?
Aye.
President Fannerstall?
Aye.
So that motion moves forward, if I'm not mistaken, that means that we have voted just to reconsider the original question, which was to postpone till 2019. Since that is being reconsidered, that same question is back on the table now at this point in time. I just want, I'm not treating anybody like they don't understand, but at first, it took me a while to wrap my head around it when I read through the rules. And so now what's on the table is the same question that we voted on, which was the motion that was originally made by Trustee Walshlager at the last meeting.
To revoke the motion.
No, we didn't.
No.
No, we voted to reconsider the motion.
You have. So you've now, the, now the original motion is back on the floor, exactly how it was before, which was a motion to postpone the issue until January 19. You could look at your minutes and see what exactly it says, but that's on the floor, just as Trustee Walshlager made the motion, and Trustee Anson seconded that motion. It's now back on the floor for you to vote on, if you.
And to clarify, based on Robert's rules, one very good way to describe this, there's two things that are very closely related. Sometimes it's called a renewal, meaning it renewed the motion and put it right back on the table. We just voted on whether we wanted to take another stab at it, that's why it's called a reconsideration. I did read into it, if anybody wants to appeal the chair, they can, I do have it in, it's very confusing, I get that. But it's a reconsideration to put the original motion back on. So Trustee Walshlager's motion, that was seconded by Trustee Anson, who, Dave is going to read the motion, or very closely to the, I think you have it correct.
Yeah.
I can, I did, I voted in the affirmative, it was to postpone any action until we had all the answers and plans at that time, we got more information after that, but at that time.
So in the minutes, the motion reads.
Boy, I had it right here. Sorry.
Once I find it again.
I got it.
In the minutes, the motion reads, drum roll, please, ladies and gentlemen. Here it is. A motion to postpone this entire issue until at least January of 2019. And then there was some verbiage that came after, that's the meter, that's the meat of the ord, of the motion.
That's the motion that's on the table right now.
Postpone the entire issue until at least January of 19.
So that is the motion that is on the table at this time, and I don't believe anybody has to make that motion.
No, it's back on the floor.
It's already back on the table, it is Trustee Walshlager's motion, and.
So if you.
Can I just repeal it, or?
No.
No.
Well, no, we got to vote on it, because it now, I know, it's confusing, it's not something that comes up, this renewal, so it's not like you did anything wrong, you did the right thing, we had more information that came in after, it changed a lot of our minds, so, but with that, I believe that unless anybody has anything to add, we'll call the question, which is that, that original motion.
You just clarify, if it passes, it is postponed until January. If it fails.
Then you are going to consider the following items.
This is the original motion, if we vote yea, if you vote yes, you are voting to postpone. If you vote no or nay, you are voting to continue with action, just like we would have last meeting, if that didn't happen. Is everybody clear? Okay, with that, unless anybody has anything to add, we'll call the question. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson?
Nay.
Trustee Doral?
Nay.
Trustee Myers?
Nay.
Trustee Landry?
Nay.
Trustee Swenson?
No.
Trustee Walshlager?
Upstain.
President Fannerstall?
No.
Ms. Haver?
Okay, so with that, that brings us back to that this is not postponed, and then we have item, the next item on the agenda, because of the current situation and what we've just voted on, is a consideration of action related to the following items or direction related to the proposed development. Now, we can talk about this all at once, or we can go one by one. The first item is a consideration of a motion to concur, this one, I, we concur with the plan commission that no access will be provided at Southern Oak.
Which is the, was the prior emergency access.
That was. I would like to see us not go through Southern Oak at all, or we're not going to have any negotiation with John Gebhardt.
So as a reminder, the plan commission indicated its willingness to, to move away from a connection at Southern Oak for everything. The only gray area when it left the plan commission was whether there needed to be any kind of emergency access. But as you all remember, and Trustee Walshlager alluded to earlier, the developer has brought in a plan that at least has preliminary approval from the county, that would take that emergency ex, entrance, rather, that emergency access route down to Highway K and not connecting it Southern Oak Drive.
And I'll even add, based on what I've seen from the county, they even put more weight on it being okay with the emergency access at K, because of the fact that we would have to go into eminent domain situation, or condemnation, however you want to word it, on someone else's property, they, it appeared that they put even more weight to saying that that's more proper.
Why don't you vote on each item, and they?
That's what we're doing, we're on that one right now.
No, but I mean, you said before, if you want to take them all.
Okay.
So then we can go.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're going to have a discussion on each one.
Absolutely, you can.
It's going to be past my bench.
I just want a quick question. If, if and not if, but when they put in that road that's supposed to go through eventually, possibly someday, the extension, do you ever plan to attach?
Are you talking about the county highway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Youngblood Road.
Yep.
Assuming that goes, whenever goes through, do you plan to connect to that?
We do not have property that will connect to it.
You don't?
We do not. Seatman owns the 40 acres east of us, their land has basically all the frontage, there's a small dedication we're going to have to make to the county in the far southeast corner of our property, and it's only a part of the right-of-way. That would be like where the future roundabout or whatever is going to go. So we don't have a spot to actually make the connection without some of Seatman's land.
Okay, I was just wondering, okay, thank you.
We do have a stub road.
That stubs out to the east, should it ever be connected.
Okay.
So regarding the consideration of motion, to concur with the plan commission, I don't believe, we didn't have a motion made yet. I would like to make a motion that we, other than utilities, that'll be going underneath, that is not a, that's not a right-of-way, since we have the access, I would like us to keep on getting away from conflict and not have, not have access at Highway K, not for emergency.
Southern Oak.
I'm sorry, Southern Oak, unless it was, sorry, I know.
No access in Southern Oak.
I'm sorry, we do have paramedics here, just in case, so, we're, he's right behind you. No access at Southern Oak, unless some crazy thing happened, and we would cross that bridge when we got to it, but I don't think we would have to. No access at Southern Oak, no emergency access at Southern Oak.
Did you make a motion?
I am making the motion, no access at Southern Oak.
Get it going.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion on that?
Could you like that?
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
There's, oh, okay, you got one opposition, you got it?
Okay.
Sorry, then I didn't catch that right away. Consideration of a motion to, to have the emergency access route directly to Highway K.
Second.
Okay, I guess.
Is that your motion?
I guess, that's true. No, that was the considera- that was me reading the agenda, I can't, that wouldn't even be legal. Did anybody else make, that was your motion?
I seconded it.
Seconded? It's been moved and seconded to have the emergency access on Highway K. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
That, that motion is carried. All right, Dick, I'm getting with the moving along here, for goodness sakes, geez, it's only been an hour and twenty minutes, we're okay? This important stuff, you can't rush through something important, that's like rushing to a wedding.
Well, I mean, when you have a second on every day, we don't have to.
Consideration of a motion to concur with the plan commission, that the, the development will include public roads with, with public maintenance. I, this concur word, can you clarify that for me? Because, do we, we have to go back and ask them again?
No, remember, the plan commission, these are the recommendations that the plan commission made, the interim recommendations that they made.
Understood, understood. So I, I've read the next item on the agenda. Okay, I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Only because we won't, and I'm gonna say with my motion, second, discussion, yes, go ahead. Discussion, it's been moved and seconded, discussion.
So my question is, if we're doing...
What was the motion, I'm sorry?
To have public roads on the, public roads and public maintenance on the development.
So my question is, would be the question of the density with going now public, are you gonna make the roads wider, are they gonna remain the same as the private? We don't have any of that information, so...
The, the public roads would be built to the public standard, so I believe the public right of way width here in the village of Heartland is sixty feet, is that right, Dave? So they would have a typical sixty foot right of way width through the community, and whatever the road standards are, which have already, we've had some discussions with engineering, but when we get to the final engineering stages, it'll be built to a public standard and a public width.
Okay.
And just for clarity on the density, the density is the density that matches the comprehensive master plan in the village of Heartland, we did not amend that.
Okay.
And in the interest of full disclosure, to respond to you, I think the intent would ultimately be to, using the PUD process, reduce the front yard setbacks, so that the, the distance, as I refer to it, between front doors would remain ninety feet, which is what the developer has proposed throughout this conversation. So the public road, the public right of way would still be sixty feet wide, but the front yards would be smaller than they would have been in a typical subdivision.
Okay.
Right, but that is okay because it's condominium.
Intent of that, the reason we asked for it from the start, keep the homes out of the woods and keep the homes away from the county highway, the current and the future county highway.
Right.
There's a lot of landscaping buffers and things we're trying to preserve, that's why we're doing that.
Right. Okay, so, that, that was moved and seconded, is there any other discussion on that? Okay, so the, it's been moved and seconded, that the property will not only have public access to the, the public will have access to the roads, but also that they will be public, publicly maintained, like other roads, and they will, they will be built to the village standard. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oppose.
Take a roll call, then, maybe, what is it?
For two people?
Or is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take a roll call.
No, no, we already voted, let's go ahead.
He asked for a roll call.
Well, no.
Rules, you gotta take it if someone asks for
She said no, and you said no, or...
Mike did.
Just, never mind, it's passed, all I wanna do is clarify, I didn't hear.
Consideration of a motion to indicate that the village board is willing to use eminent domain to acquire underground utility access easements only if negotiation between developer and property owner fails.
Also move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. I will ask, since you are here, it just...
I can comment on this.
Oh, if you'd like to comment, I just wanna make sure that there's just some good hard work on, on the negotiations.
In my mind, this is, this is the hardest one, we, we specifically requested this be on the agenda as a specific item, and the reason is because there's a possibility, we have been in active conversations with the landowner, as, as you all know, we had, well, I think that was at the plan commission, when the actual property owner, and we're talking about the thirty foot driveway that exists between Mary Hill and our land, I think everyone's familiar with that. We've been in conversations with that landowner, I think the first time I talked to him was last summer sometime, that conversation did not go well at all, and I basically said, well, we'll reach out to you again if the project is actually moving forward, but there's no sense in engaging further in this dialogue until we find out if the project's actually gonna happen. Since that time, there have been multiple forms of communication, email, phone calls, letters to the owners, well, to the owners' legal counsel, and the bottom line is this, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm optimistic that given we're not asking for a right of way crossing, and we're not asking for even emergency access crossing, I'm optimistic that underground utility connections, which will have no impact on his actual driveway, other than when we make the connection, you know, we'll have to do an open cut to connect the lines, but then we repair his driveway, and there shouldn't be any others, you know, meaningful change, it's just an easement that the village will need, that we can work it out. But the reality is, from our standpoint, if we go through this process and get all these approvals, do our engineering, annex the land into the village of Heartland, and then find out that we can't access the utilities, it, it would be obviously a very poor decision on our part, in that case, then we would need to somehow go back to the town of Burton to develop it as a well and septic site, which would make no sense at all.
Right.
So our point was, before we annex the land, we need to know that the village is committed, committed enough to this project to say that in the event we can't negotiate a utility easement privately between two parties, which that could happen, just based on the dialogue our firm has had with the landowner or the landowners' council, that is a possibility, we can't get caught between that rock and a hard place. So at the end of the day, we're willing to pay for an easement, we are willing to buy an easement, but there's a standard of reasonableness that's gonna need to apply to that, and as I'm sure you all can understand, one person's version of reasonable for utility crossings may be different than another person's, and we need to make sure that in the event that we get held up at that stage, that the village will step in and say, we are going to make these utility connections because we need these for the system that we have built throughout the village of Heartland, not just for this project, but lands further to the east as well. So that's why we're requesting it, I'm not asking you to take an eminent domain position today, just that in the event we can't work it out with the landowner, that you are willing to take that step and force the utility connections to allow them through to the remainder of our land as well as other village land to the east. So I wanted to put that out there, 'cause I'm not in favor of eminent domain, but there are times where municipalities have that right for a reason, and I wanna make sure that the village is committed to using that in the event that we can't work that out in the near term with the landowner. The attorney was here though, by the way, so this is not my reason, or not my way of just saying, hey, let's force this, we're gonna try to be reasonable, but we have been so far, and a couple weeks ago, he stood here and said he'd never talked to us and had no idea, and I was very shocked by that. So the bottom line is, I just need to know where the village stands on that topic, 'cause we don't wanna annex the land without knowing that you're gonna help, help us get services in the event that we need your help.
And at the same time, no, no, at the same time, and I mean, taking both, you know, both parties, we know, there's been talking, some there, not the, you guys, not best friends, but nothing wrong with that, I'm saying on both sides, I'm not, not one person's bad or good, I'm hoping people can set differences aside, and I think for this village, I think ideally, the best thing that would happen would be that you guys are able to work it out. You know what I mean? That you guys can work it out, and then we end up not even getting involved, I can't understand what you're saying from your standpoint, you wouldn't want all of a sudden something to be like, well, I'm the final straw here, two hundred thousand a site, you wouldn't wanna be caught in that position, at the same time, I hope that you could give, and I think you will, but I'm gonna ask it, but I don't, this doesn't mean anything bad, I'm just asking, can you give the village board your word, however this vote goes, that you will, you know, reasonably negotiate with them also, and will not use the fact that you're like, well, the village board's gonna back me anyways.
Yes, I'll even put this on the record, the village already has taken a stance on utility connections, and a very, very similar, in a situation, in a very similar location, not that particular driveway, but I'm saying for utilities. We kind of know what the market price is for something like this, because it is public, what happened in that case, so, truthfully, we're gonna be reasonable, we're gonna offer very similar to, probably the same as what happened in that last proceeding when the village needed utility access, and the landowners weren't super cooperative in doing that, and the, and the village ultimately said, we're going to make this connection. So, I, we're gonna do the same thing that the village did, and I think that's reasonable, if that doesn't work, I understand, then we're gonna have, ask the board to move forward with a, you know, a condemnation of utility access.
I appreciate you being that forthcoming, I just wanted to know that there was, you know what, I, the village doesn't wanna get in between, you guys gotta be nice if you guys can make it happen, so I just wanted your word that you're gonna really try to work hard to...
We've actually put an offer on the table already, that's a little higher than that, so that's all we're gonna do, and that's that, but we'll try to keep the board out of it.
Thank you for being that forthcoming. So with that, anybody have any, do we, did we get a motion?
You did.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, anybody get it, anyone else? Huh? Okay, gotcha. Um, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Upstain.
Got it. That motion passes. All right, so, next we have, with all of that being said, we have the, this is simply a reading.
No, it's just a first reading.
This is a first reading.
Yeah.
The first reading of a bill for an ordinance, ten twenty-two, two thousand eighteen dash one, an ordinance annexing territory to the village of Heartland, Wisconsin, pursuant to Wisconsin statute sixty-six point oh two one seven, section two.
I moved that way. At first reading.
It's a first reading. Next, we have the first reading of a bill for an ordinance, ten twenty-two, twenty eighteen dash two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the village of Heartland. That reading is, that's a first...
Let me just comment on, on both of those ordinances, just for everyone's reference, have a clause in them that is similar to ones that we have used in the past in the case of an annexation and a zoning related to a new subdivision, and that, that clause basically creates a, a delayed effective date for the ordinance, all contingent on final approval of the planned unit development agreement in this case. So, to trustee Walshlager's concerns about making sure final plans are done, neither one of these actions, the last two that you've talked about, would become effective, even after the village board has voted on them, until an agreement is reached in the planned unit development, which has attached to it, all those plans that you're talking about, and there isn't a final understanding at the village board level of what the approval is, it's all written down in a document that right now is sitting at about thirty pages, and the developer has executed it. So, once that agreement is reached, is when all of this stuff will become effective, and it's sort of this instantaneous, everything drops into place.
That's important for us, and it is also important for the village, it's a mutually beneficial clause.
And they also both, by the way, have a, a drop dead on them, so basically, the draft right now shows that if we haven't reached an agreement by March of two thousand nineteen, that it would all drop, and we would be, we would have to reapprove. And that's in the draft, obviously, things can change in the next couple of times as we go through the reading here, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, that they're all contingent on that final agreement, so that there is an understanding, and there is an executed agreement in place that describes the development in its entirety. Thank you.
It does turn out to be good that you were here to answer questions, so I'm glad that you decided to come.
It's deer hunting week, but I'm still here for a while. Thank you, I'm sure we'll be back again in two weeks, and, two weeks, and, two weeks.
I suppose I should wish you Merry Christmas, or I'm gonna see you before Thanksgiving.
All right.
Might see you before Thanksgiving.
Are you in a hurry? Do you wanna get going, or do you wanna talk? Take care of it, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, we have, make sure I have it right here, consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of wanted or replacement audience and general purpose chairs for the village hall from Office Pro in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, and to declare as surplus, and authorize the disposal of existing chairs upon, upon their replacement.
They're not reclining chairs, no.
What we're talking about are the audience chairs in this room, the chairs that are used in the community center for cards and for the regular activities down there, plus then backstock, so that when we have large meetings in here, we aren't busting out our nineteen eighties orange plastic...
Those things can go.
These don't look much different from those.
I beg your pardon?
These don't look much different from those, I'm talking about the ones without the wheels.
They are not...
Are those just in bad shape that we have?
Well, as, those of you that are sitting in them can probably rock on them, because we're, we're having a tough time keeping up on feet and...
Can I also suggest that we get a couple chairs that don't have arms for...
What, for the police department?
Well, yeah, for the police, that need wider seating area, for their guns in there.
So they don't get their guns caught.
We could certainly look into that, these are a pretty wide chair.
You know what I'm...
I understand what you're saying.
We don't wanna get their guns caught in there.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But anyway, so that we, the staff is, is suggesting a hundred, twenty-five of them would live in here, about twenty-five of them would live in the community center all the time, and then we'd have about fifty in backstock for when we have large gatherings in the room, in the building, rather.
All right.
If that's okay with the board.
I'd move that we buy the chairs.
I second.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion on the purchase and the, and the authorization to put up for auction, or sale the excess chairs? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried, we'll be getting new chairs, so you can all come to the board meeting, they will be more comfortable, please come down here, it's a great time.
No, I mean, the ones in the other areas. They're...
Be kidding here, you on the... We gotta be professional. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve change order number one to the contract with Stark Paving Corporation for the two thou...
Yeah.
No, sorry, sorry, sorry. Consideration of a motion to approve the award to the contract to Groundskeeper Inc. of Heartland in the amount of forty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars sixty cents for the purchase and installation of some street trees, including new subdivision trees.
Also move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
Can they still put them in? In the ground?
Yes.
Kind of getting, starting to freeze?
They can, Mike is here, he can respond to that, but...
Lot, lot of times, that's how you...
See, it's not me, he's asking about trees and all this.
Big dormer right now.
I know we want it to fall, but it's kinda cold out.
Yes, they can, as long as the ground isn't frozen, they can put them in. Tomorrow, I will call him, Fred at Groundskeepers, give him the signed purchase order, it takes about five days for the nursery to get the trees ready, and deliver it to him, and then he'll start installing.
How many trees are you gonna be planting?
Roughly a hundred.
Do you... Usually have snowstorms the week of Christmas, you know?
They'll, they'll be in by Christmas.
Yeah. Or the, the week of Thanksgiving, I mean.
He assures me they can get it done, they may have to go into December, but they can get them done.
Should he dig them out and freeze and...
So this whole amount of forty-six thousand is only for a hundred trees? They install it, buying them and installing them?
Yes, yep.
And are they guaranteed in case?
Yes, they are, for one year.
Okay.
For one year.
If they die, they'll pull and put them back in.
And as I said in my memo, the subdivision trees are financed through the homeowners, when the builder or homeowner takes out all their permits, they pay for those new subdivision trees.
So then, do we get some of the money back?
We, they pay, they pay for all of the ones for new subdivisions.
I got you, I got you.
Ryan's holding it someplace.
We have an account that that money gets put into that we draw from, when, when we pay the bill. We went to that process because invariably, if this developer put them in, they would be in an area where a driveway was supposed to go, or, and they'd have to move them, or, so, by doing this, when the house is finished, the landscaping's done, we can place them Any other discussion?
That's a normal ten to fifteen foot tree.
Uh, it, it's two and a half inches diameter, measured X number of inches off the ground.
They're usually about seventy feet tall.
Yeah.
Six or seven feet when they go in.
Yeah.
They're well matured, so that they don't die midway with the salt and all that.
Mm-hmm.
And is this something we bid out, or?
I did.
You did?
I, I asked four different companies for proposals, only one of which responded back to me. Usually we get three, I wanted to see if I could get at least two that would propose to me, and only one did so.
Wow. Is this the, uh, close to the customary price we paid in the past?
Yes, very similar.
It ends up being about four hundred and seventy bucks a tree installed.
Actually, we're about three fifty.
Yeah, the average is closer.
Oh, there's a wide variety of trees. And if you're really looking at it, you're paying seventy-five bucks to have someone put it in the ground.
Right, and all ash.
That's pretty cheap.
All right, any, any other questions on the, on the, we're good? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now moving on to number nine, consideration of a motion to approve the change order number one to the contract with Stark Paving Corporation for the two thousand eighteen paving program in the net additional amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars eighteen cents for a revised contract amount of one million one hundred fifty thousand two hundred forty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Just to add, that is a contract that we already approved, this is a change order that we are simply addressing. Also move. It's been moved and seconded to approve the change order. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item, we have consideration of a motion to surplus certain village property as listed in the staff memorandum, and authorize its sale at auction.
So we're talking, Mike, you want to, there, quickly, we're talking about fire hydrants, retractable lifelines, which you can describe, sewer cleaning heads, lift station cleaning equipment, snow blowers, pipe locators, computer scanner for vehicles, an electric pump and a pole saw.
Also move.
One second.
A question. It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
That's a small market, you're, I mean, how many people want hydrants?
Oh, 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 my goodness, are you, I was just saying, when you said they had the car scanner, I actually had a question, I was going to say, are we going to make sure that general public that might pay more, is there a stab at it for the employees first, or? No, that's against the law. Okay, I didn't, I didn't know, I was simply asking. State law prohibits that. It's a, it's an honest question that could. Absolutely.
I get that question all the time.
Well, and it happens. And it, in fact, that's why we use the online site that we use. Okay. Because by doing so, it does allow village staff to bid on those items because we're not technically selling them.
Which online site?
Excuse me?
Which online site?
Uh, Wisconsin Surplus Online.
And may I ask you, when I was at the annual municipality conference, I did talk to another company, I talked with them, but I talked to another company that said they've been trying to get our business, and what, you know, why do we not work with them? Because they're national, and it doesn't cost us any more to have anything shipped.
Because typically, we've always used Wisconsin Surplus, unfamiliar with their process, and it doesn't cost us anything.
Well, this one neither, but is there a reason we don't, I don't think bid it out, but at least talk to another company and see how things would work out? Why do we keep going?
Yeah, I guess I'm familiar with using their process.
And stay local. I just, because they, they had brought up, and I, I apologize, I, I was going to bring the information with me, that they can get better pricing, meaning that they're national, and it wouldn't cost us any more than the other company.
But I thought the other company didn't cost us.
All I can say is that I typically use these.
Okay.
They may or may not be able to get a better price.
Okay, I, I just, it was just asked of me at the conference.
Right, one of the things that concerns me is when you go national, we have the ability for people to come to us and see this stuff, and I don't know how that other company works with that.
How did you go down there and they put a price on them?
No.
I mean, if I want a, want a fire hydrant, I come down there, do I sit, come, you'll buy one?
No, we put it on as a lot, and I believe we have eighteen of them.
Oh, my gosh.
And then they put it up to auction. Typically on fire hydrants, we don't put a minimum, we're also selling a pickup truck that the board approves sale of when we bought the other one. In that case, I will put a minimum on it, and I'll put the minimum that we would have gotten trade, so that we guarantee that we will at least get what we've been promised in trade.
But then if I wanted to buy a fire hydrant, I'd have to go to the copyback.
You go to that website, and it's.
Because you can buy one, in other words.
No, you have to buy the lot.
And he wants that one at a time.
No, because we set the terms.
That's what I wanted to do.
How heavy is one of, are one of those things?
How heavy is a fire hydrant?
Yes.
Four hundred to five hundred pounds.
Yeah.
I don't even know exactly.
Well, that's why the only thing, I hope we don't sell it for ten bucks, but that's how it goes. Because you'll make a bunch of money.
And I just want to comment too, not that we were opposed to looking into it, every time we put something on Wisconsin Surplus, it seems to go for more than we, by far more than we anticipated. I, to be honest, that's one of the reasons we've always done that, there, there were trucks.
Sure.
No, no. Information because I didn't really pay.
The next time we do an auction, we can put, like, we, we put in a police car in Wisconsin Surplus, we've always sold that through a different auction, and we got about the same as, as the other auctions, so.
I have the information, and I will pass it on to you so you have it.
Absolutely.
I did promise I would do that, so.
We can take a police vehicle or something, we can try it and see what happens.
Okay, I just, I just, you know, when that's asked of me, and this is the first year I didn't have, um, Mike with me to explain all of it, so I didn't have answers for them. That's why I'm asking. Okay, I will do that. Jeff?
Sorry, I was mentioning. So with that, I was not listening, I was, sorry. I'm very sorry for my rudeness and unprofessionalism as I sit before you all, usually I'm very attentive. Do we have a motion in a second?
You do.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is discussion of the DPW director interview process and determining the board member involvement, if the, if the board will allow, I mean, ask for a postponement, or even make a motion to postpone that until end of the month. Number one, the board knows that this is here, start thinking about your ideas, and please pass those on, preferably to the, the village administrator, but also call with your questions and, and ideas of what you're thinking, but please, let's get some communication going on that, with some more communication, then maybe we'll be able to solidify that, or it'll be a little quicker than having all of that discussion, you know, at the end of the month, it won't be as long as it would be tonight, I think the right thing to do is to, I, I'm making the motion to postpone it, however, I want the administrator to be able to at least give the general idea of what information he wants.
Five seconds, you, as long as it wants, or I'll second.
Yep, yep. It's been moved and seconded to postpone this till our next village board meeting, but I will ask.
So just by, let me mention a couple of things then, the director of public works position is advertised, those letters of interest, resumes, cover letters, et cetera, are due to the village by not later than November thirty, and the intent is, is by that time to have begun going through, there would be an initial, if you will, weeding out process, making sure that people meet our basic requirements, and then ultimately there would need to be a process by where, by which we narrow the field, and ultimately perform some interviews, and what I would want to talk about with the village board is where it sees itself getting inserted into that process, ultimately with department heads, there are, there have been a variety of processes, but generally they've been interviews with management staff, interviews that involve the village board at some level, and some interviews with, with the department staff, and so just trying to create that method, that blend for how we're going to handle that in the case of the Department of Public Works Director, and I wanted to talk with the village board about how much it wanted to be involved in that selection process. Clearly, ultimately, the village board would, in my mind, meet with that, with that, at least one individual, if not two individuals, and we just want to clarify how you want to handle that, if you want one member to sit through the entire process, or if you want a plan that at some point you have a group interview, or a group meeting, or whatever. So that's the, that's the intent of the conversation, to just get your thoughts and, and make a decision on how the board wants to be involved in that process.
I think you, you are some board member, one, run it down to two or three if we get that many.
Right.
So the whole board is down looking at each one and.
Okay.
And anybody that has your, you know, and you'll stop in and talk, Dave or Callum, but people can email, call, or stop in if he's available to talk to him, so that he, you'll start compiling kind of that data and be able to kind of bring up.
Yep.
Yeah, or this in three or whatever, you know? So that'll be, okay, so it's been moved and seconded and postponed, is there any other discussion, any other members? Want to talk on that? Okay, all in favor of postponing till the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion is carried. At this time, we have announcements, I know of one that's, I'm guessing going to be coming, I was, I was with her, but you want to talk about?
Okay.
Okay, at the VFW, they put on a fantastic thing for the veterans, I was invited last year by trustee Walshlager, was the first time I went to it, it was great, went this year, I knew it was coming, trustee Dora was there, they were very happy to see us, we got a really nice email, it, it was just a really good time, and it always is good to, you know, be there to support those guys, I think there was Veterans Day celebr- or services all over the area, but to our veterans, thank you, to all of you who serve, and that's, that's what I had.
I've got a couple quick ones. Last week, we completed our accreditation process, so that was, I shouldn't say completed, but started, it was a three-day-long intensive audit, where we had three different law enforcement representatives come in, look through our policies and procedures, and ensure that we were in compliance with best practice. Good news is, we were not found in non-compliance with anything, so that's always good. Um, next step of the process, you may have seen a press release go out, where one of the lead accreditor, who is the chief in Cedarburg, he actually does phone interviews, so if you do have an opportunity on November twenty-seventh, between one PM and three PM, I encourage anyone to call in on behalf of the police department to talk about how we meet those accreditation standards.
One to three?
One PM to three PM.
Okay.
On the twenty-seventh, and talk about how we meet those accreditation standards, or any relevant information on how we deliver our police services. After that, they take it to their YU Laag, which is the accreditation board, and then they vote on reaccreditation or not, but all indications are, we're moving in a positive direction, and we should have some more information on that towards end of the year. And then tomorrow, we have a PFC meeting, at that Police and Fire Commission meeting, we are going to be recognizing two individuals, one Officer Greenwood for a life-saving award, and then also a citizen with a letter of appreciation, this is in regards to an event that occurred in late September where a person was found with no pulse and not breathing from an apparent drug overdose, the citizen happened to locate that person and go above and beyond to direct law enforcement and fire personnel to that scene, and Officer Greenwood, being one of the first responders, was able to administer Narcan and, and ultimately save that person's life. So anyone wishing to attend the PFC meeting to recognize their efforts is greatly encouraged.
And that's at seven PM in this room?
Seven PM tomorrow.
Awesome, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of quick things, just wanted to remind everybody, the Holiday Train is Friday, December seventh, at five forty-five PM, we will have some vendors there with hot dogs, hot chocolate, hot cider, and possibly a street truck with some sweets, another couple with some popcorn. I want to give a big thanks to Public Works, if any of you have not been to the train site, you should go there and see what they did. It used to be overgrown, they trimmed it up, trimmed up some trees, put down some mulch, removed some boulders, it'll be a much safer event, much better event for all of the citizens, so, and that will stop, huh? Huh?
My boulder disappeared.
Oh.
You got any extra ones?
Sure we do, sure we do, but it looks really good, it's going to be a good event, I think people are going to be able to see it up and down.
December seventh.
Friday the seventh at five forty-five PM, so.
And Heartland Lights to go off of that is on the thirtieth.
Looks awesome, really nice. No, they didn't, did you see it?
Heartland Lights is November thirtieth, it's different this year because it's not, it's not the same weekend as the train, but so November thirtieth is a Friday, it's the weekend before, where the train, I, I don't even know what day that is, I know it's the seventh, I don't know what, it is a Friday, okay. So it's the following Friday, but they're on separate weekends, little bit different than we've had last year, but so come out and see the tree get lit up, and the kids singing the choir and that kind of stuff, and have some hot cocos or stuff, and one of the local establishments after, after for a soda, something to eat, or even maybe a beer.
And make cards for the, the veterans.
Oh, and that, yeah, make cards for the veterans. Any other announcements? I believe we have, do we have fire announcements? Nope.
But I will say for the fire department, that for the coloring contest that they had during the fire prevention week, first prize was to go around, get picked up by the fire truck, they just did an amazing job, there's video online, it's just, it's great to see what they do and how much the community really liked it.
Yeah.
So.
I, I, I would have thought it was cool when I was a kid.
I'd have to get it covered right now, so you picked me up before you were.
Any, any other announcements?
An adult class, we need more of them.
No? Just spectating, okay. Oh. Well, with that, we have a consideration of a motion to recess, to closed session pursuant to state statutes nineteen point eight-five-one-e, deliberating of or negotiating for the purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conduct of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed sessions regarding the potential purchase of, or, or acquisition of the public property, namely a community center facility, through an option to acquire the Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church at four fifteen West Capitol Drive, Heartland, and to adjourn thereafter without returning to open session pursuant to nineteen point eight-five, section two. And the motion, I remembered it at that time, did you notice? I caught it.
When we go into closed session.
I second that. It's been moved and seconded, roll call.
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Trustee Darrell?